It's time to call the meeting of the September 11th, 2018 School Board Meeting. Want to issue a very warm welcome to all of you. It's nice to see some faces in the audience tonight. I know it's kind of a tough night. School, believe it or not, we've been back in for almost, what, five weeks now? It seems like a very short time, but there's a lot of learning and socializing and good things going on in our schools. So it's good to see all of you here tonight and a very warm welcome also to our listening audience. If you would stand with me now for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for our Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter Pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the proposed adoption of amendments to student progression plan for elementary, middle, and high school. Is there anyone that would like to come and address the board with regards to the student progression plans? Seeing no movement, we will take the recommendation from you Superintendent Gent.
Recommend the board approve the proposed amendments to the student progression plan for elementary, middle, and high school as presented.
Board members, we have the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hensley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And let the record reflect that the vote is four zero. Dr. Mills is absent tonight, so we'll have four votes forthcoming tonight. We open now the public hearing for the final millages and the budget for 2018-19. And I'll ask our CFO, Michelle Thomas, to provide us with a brief overview before we move forward.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening, School Board Members, Superintendent Gent. This is the final budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing was July 24th, 2018. The information regarding millage rates is exactly identical to what was presented on July 24th. There were no changes to millage rates and budgets changed slightly. So we will go through this fairly quickly while I still cover the required elements. At the end of the presentation, we will vote to approve final millage rates. After millage rates are approved, we will vote to approve the final budget and resolutions, all three resolutions at one time. This slide shows proposed millage rates and the taxable value millage and tax collection revenue estimates at 100% and 96%. We budget at 96% because with the discounts the taxpayers get, we never actually collect 100%. Sorry, this microphone is a little... The 4.0870 is the required local effort, which comes from the Department of Education. The .748 is a supplemental operating millage and the 1.50 is a capital operating millage. These funds go into the capital project funds. 6.335 is the total. The board does not have the authority to increase the millage above this level. This was set by the legislature and it is our maximum millage for the 18-19 school year. This slide is the history of the millage rates. This is the same information that was reviewed in July. This slide shows the difference between the operating and the capital components of the millage rate. I'm going to jump over here to slide six. This shows the taxable value history. You can see a really big decline. We've started to see some increases. The tax collection history, on the other hand, is not quite as large of a slope because of the drops in the millage rates. The impact on the average homeowner, though, go back to this slide here. The average assessed value per the property appraiser's office ran from 157,000 to 172,000. The home sit exemption is assumed at 25,000, so you get the net assessed value and apply that times the millage rate each year. So even though there's a decrease in the millage rate, because there's an increase in the taxable value, the average homeowner in the county will see an increase of $60.19 on their tax bill. This is the history of the reduction in taxes collected, and since 2007/8, we have seen a cumulative reduction in tax collections to the tune of $574 million. The rollback rate is something we're required to talk about. This slide here will explain it the best. In 1718, the taxable value was 21.3 billion. The millage rate was 6.574. That generated 140 million dollars in tax revenue. The rollback rate is a calculated rate that will generate the same revenue using this year's taxable value, which is 6.146. Since we have a proposed rate of 6.335, which is greater than the 6.146, we have to compare those two and make a public statement that the proposed rate is 3.08% greater than the rollback rate. Here's a summary of the budget by fund group. The grand total is 551,624,665. Any questions before we vote on the proposed millage rates and budget?
That would like to address the board with any of the aforementioned... Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and we will entertain the superintendent's recommendations. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
I recommend the board approve the final required local effort millage of 4.0870 mils as specified in Resolution 2018-19, TRIM final A.
Board members, we have the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Recommend the board approve the final district school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mils as specified in Resolution 2018-19, TRIM final A.
Board members, we have the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hilsen, second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Recommend the board approve the final discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.500 mils as specified in Resolution 2018-19, TRIM final A.
Board members, we have the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Recommend the board adopt the 2018-19 final budget in the amount of 551,624,665.
Board members, we have the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Hilsen with the motion, a second, second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Recommend the board adopt Resolution 2018-19, TRIM final B, Resolution 2018-19, TRIM final C, and Resolution 2018-19, TRIM final D.
Board members, we have the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you, Ms. Thomas, for the well-done presentation. Okay, we will now move to our special orders of business.
Okay, I'd like to bring up Ms. Patrick, and she will introduce our guest and make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. The safety and security of our schools does indeed cover a broad scope. And this evening, I invite Ms. Latonya Green, the Director of Student Services and Exceptional Student Education, along with Kim Pennington, who is our School Health Services Coordinator, to introduce two very, very special individuals that have been supporting the district, and they represent the Jessica Clinton Foundation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. I have with me this evening is our Coordinator of Nursing for our district, Kim Pennington. And this evening, we have the opportunity to be able to ask Mrs. Ray Inschurle-Lulu to join us this evening. We are here tonight to donate another automatic external defibrillator. Mr. and Mrs. Lulu are not strangers to this board. They have been here before with their generosity and advocacy for this wonderful project. Mrs. Lulu founded the Jessica Clinton MVP Foundation and has spent a great deal of time organizing fundraisers to benefit the foundation. This year marks the fourth year that they have also worked with our local Panera Bread Restaurant and assisted in the fundraising efforts for the Jessica Clinton Foundation by selling heart-shaped cookies during the month of February. This year, the foundation used its Facebook page to have a contest. We are so grateful to their kindness and generosity of the Lulu family and for their continued support of our school system and most importantly, and most importantly, their tireless efforts to make sure that these lifesaving devices are in our schools. This evening, we have the opportunity that will also will be joining us this evening with Mr. and Mrs. Lulu is the Principal of St. Lucy West K-8. Oh. This Mr. Gardner is coming up? Okay, all right. And then, I'm like, I think he's the principal of St. Lucy West. Okay, and then, Bree Lamb, who will also join us this evening, who is the Principal of Windmill Point Elementary.
Just to kind of clear things up, we're supposed to donate one AED tonight, but tonight we're able to donate two. So I'll tell you the story on the background of that. But the first AED that we would like to donate is to St. Lucy West and K-8. And we were hoping our little girl that had won the contest that we had given, she was supposed to come up, but I don't see her here. And then also, with the second AED, we were, this is a great story, and I think they're just coming up now. We'd also like to ask Deputy Tracy to come up. The Renaissance Charter School had a fundraiser, and they helped include us with that. And they raised enough money, not just for one, which is what they were aiming for, they raised three. So what they did was, with the third AED, they donated it back to us so that we could give it to another school. So that's why we're able to give one also to Windmill Point. But I wanted to bring up one of this young lady. When they say it takes a village, this young girl, she had $86 in a jar, and that was her money for her school supplies this year. She donated every dollar to this fundraiser. So I wanted to acknowledge her and her generous gift.
I'm stinky and sweaty after working for 10 hours already. That was great.
Okay. Yep. Talk about the heart screening?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Also, I wanted to talk to you about one other service that we provide for the community. Every year, we do a free heart screening, which is held at the St. Lucy County Health Department. We try to screen approximately 350 kids each year, and it is a free heart screening. There is no charge to anyone. So on the jessicachlinton.org website, you can register your child. The ages of the screening is between the ages of five and 20. And again, we do EKGs, echocardiograms. There is a pediatric cardiologist on site. There's actually several on site. And in the state of Florida, there's probably, you know, a handful of pediatric cardiologists. And there are resident doctors that do a full physical on the child at the same time. So please take advantage of that. And also, on the 20th night, they're doing a dedication ceremony at the Jessica Clinton Community Park in Port St. Lucie. That is also going to be a free event. There will be fun events for the kids, bounce houses, face painting, and a bunch of vendors that'll be doing stuff for free. So, okay.
Thank you so much. And for those of you interested, we do have all of that information posted on our social media sites and in our district newsletters, and we will continue to promote that event. For now, we are moving toward literacy with President Elise Brainin and council members who are going to share the Treasure Coast Literacy Association, formerly known as the St. Lucy County Reading Council, proclamation for promoting a passion for literacy. So please come forward.
Thank you very much. Good evening. We have exciting news that the St. Lucy Reading Council will now be known as the Treasure Coast Literacy Association in keeping with the International Literacy Association and the Florida Literacy Association. They've changed all of their names from reading to literacy to include everything literacy. And Nicole Eek is our vice president, and she is going to make me past president very soon, and she will, as she takes over president of the council, of the association. So the now-known Treasure Coast Literacy Association, whereas the St. Lucy Reading Council is a local professional literacy association dedicated to supporting St. Lucy County public schools, district literacy goals and initiatives, and going forward will now be known as the Treasure Coast Literacy Association.
Whereas the Treasure Coast Literacy Association provides professional development and networking opportunities for educators and...
Whereas the Treasure Coast Literacy Association provides professional development and networking opportunities for educators and...
Whereas the Treasure Coast Literacy Association hosts community events to promote literacy for our students and families and...
Whereas the ultimate goal of all, in all Treasure Coast Literacy Association events and communication is to promote a passion for literacy among St. Lucy County educators and our surrounding districts and students in the community and...
Whereas the Treasure Coast Literacy Association wishes to create a visible and cohesive membership dedicated to promoting a passion for literacy across content areas, as well as for pleasure and individual purposes and...
Whereas the Treasure Coast Literacy Association exists for the benefit of all educators, students, families, and the community members by promoting this passion for literacy.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida, that each Wednesday in the 2018-2019 school year be and is hereby recognized as a day to promote a passion for literacy in which the Treasure Coast Literacy Association members shall wear their council shirts as a sign of unity in promoting a passion for literacy across content areas, for pleasure, and for individual purposes.
And the T-shirts are forthcoming because, of course, we need a new logo, and we wanted to change the way our shirts look. So those will be coming. We also have Palm Point as our, this year's winner for the most members, and so they are going to win Dr. Lois McGuire as their author visit. Thank you.
I invite Dr. Kevin G. Perry to come forward and share with you some information about this annual event that we recognize and how important it is for fathers and male caregivers to be involved in our students' lives.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Gent, more than 30 years of research findings maintain the belief that a positive relationship exists between a father's involvement and a student's academic achievement, social, emotional development, and overall success. At the direction of Chancellor Lyons, the state of Florida implemented Dads Take Your Child to School Day in September of 2015. Although it's a single-day event for the Department of Education, schools in St. Lucy County program a series of events that target the male's participation and influence on a child's education. That's why in St. Lucy County, we proudly say, "It's a movement, not a moment." Tonight, I've invited Alejandro and Angelica Sanchez, sixth grade and fifth grade students from Palm Point Educational Research School, to escort our proclamation presenter in pursuit of your approval and support. Please welcome Alejandro and Angelica as they join their dad, Dr. Rafael Sanchez, to present our Dads Take Your Child to School Day proclamation. Dr. Sanchez.
Board members, Superintendent Gent, thank you for the opportunity to read the proclamation of Dads Take Your Child to School Day. We're excited to participate. I would also like to take the opportunity to personally thank you for the opportunity to serve, for your leadership, and for your support, and more importantly, for welcoming my family into the wonderful school system that we have. It's been a, you cannot put a price on the peace of mind. So with that, the proclamation for Dads Take Your Child to School Day 2018. Whereas, family involvement in a child's learning is critical to student success from preschool through college and sets the foundation for preparing Florida students to be lifelong learners and meaningful contributors to society. And whereas, research indicates there is a correlation between the level of a father's involvement in their child's education and their academic success. And whereas, research further indicates that children whose fathers take active roles in their educational lives better academically, have fewer discipline problems, and more likely to graduate from high school and attend college and become more responsible adults. And whereas, education has become a matter of national security. And whereas, St. Lucy public schools have established effective homeschool collaboration so that families can be actively involved in the education and social-emotional development of students. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the critical contributions made by fathers who foster a love for learning in their children and by educators who acknowledge the importance of family engagement and encourage participation by fathers as an integral part of the mission of all schools. And whereas fathers, grandfathers, uncles, significant male caregivers, and mentors are all encouraged to participate in the Dads Take Your Child to School Day. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida, joins with the Florida Department of Education to hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 26, 2018, as Dads Take Your Child to School Day, and calls upon all citizens to observe this day by taking the time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of the male influence on educational success. And witness, therefore, whereof, the chairman and superintendent have set their hand and seal this 11th day of September 2018.
Madam Chair, Board Members, thank you for your support of this valuable initiative. Our wonderful schools are in preparation of father-centered activities that will take place throughout the school year, that help us to better connect our families and our fathers with our schools, and once again, prove that it is a movement, not just a moment.
And once again, let me share a plug for social media and information. The district will be providing information on this, and the schools individually have their own social media pages, so we invite our parents to please follow us on Facebook and other social media outlets for information. We now move to our STAR Award. The STAR Program's focus is to recognize employees for their behaviors, skills, and actions that correlate with the district's vision and acknowledge those that exemplify its core values. At this time, I would like to please call Ms. Marisol Abrahante and Nikki O'Neal forward. Both are from the Student Services and Exceptional Student Education Department, and they both serve St. Lucy West K-8 school. This recommendation comes from a parent, a former St. Lucy West K-8 parent, Amy Richards. She says, "I wanted to take a moment to let you know that your ESE specialist, Marisol Abrahante, and speech pathologist Nikki O'Neal are the absolute best part of your school. They are, they were the two people my son and I both knew we could turn to for advice, for help, and for guidance. They work tirelessly all year, from day-to-day meetings to the endless phone calls from parents and from the school itself. They just never stop. Their commitment to the students and parents is unsurpassed. Please take a moment to thank them for me and my son and let them know that they are truly appreciated." So we thank you very, very much. And now, I ask Mr. Jimmy Hardison from our Transportation Department to please come forward. This was submitted from several of his colleagues. They said, "Since his arrival to the Transportation Department, Jimmy Hardison has been extremely supportive in offering his assistance. From early morning to late evening, we know that Mr. Hardison is available to help with parent questions or concerns that come in through our office. We also appreciate his follow-up. His manner is always courteous, and we can count on him to see matters through to completion in the most expeditious manner." Mr. Hardison, we do thank you for your continued service.
Our special orders of business are always such a heartwarming time to be able to recognize our employees and those in our community that are so involved with our schools. So thank you and congratulations to each of you again. Move now to our CTA report. Mr. Freeland? Welcome to the podium tonight. It is a long walk tonight.
Board members, Superintendent Gent, good evening. I have a little bit of a problem this evening. I had a speech all prepared and written, and then something happened this morning that made me want to change it. So I'll give you a little context, but I'll spare you from the original sort of talk. Over the summer, I've been concerned about people. And when I've shared that concern, I was met with, "We'll follow the contract." And that concerns me because the contract sometimes sets a low bar for how we treat people. And so I was concerned I was going to regale you with stories of everything that happened. And this morning, I was able to partner the union and district... And this morning, I was able to partner, the union and the district partnered. We went out and we talked to some people that were impacted by a decision that was made, spent a lot of time, Patty Galloway and myself, and we were able to, first of all, make them feel like they were valued by the district and the union in this case. Spent a lot of time listening to what they had to say. And in two-thirds of the cases, two out of three, I think we were able to do things for them that made them feel good about where they were working and what they were doing, and how they were contributing to students in the school district. And so, rather than talk about what has happened, I'd rather talk about what happened this morning, because I think that's a good example of what can happen when we partner, and when we're worried about the people that are involved in some of the decisions that we make. And so, I don't have a lot to say, except that it felt really good to be partnering and doing good things for people with the district. And so, hopefully, that'll continue. Hopefully, that's a model for how we'll move forward with these things. It doesn't only solve the contract side of it, but it does help the people side of it, and both are really very, very important. So, I want to thank the district, and I don't think Patty Galloway's here, but I'd like to thank her for her time this morning, being able to go and to do that, and to take care of people, because I think that's important. That's why I think we all do what we do, ultimately, is for people and students, and so, thank you. And that's really all I want to share this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland, and you are exactly right. That is why we do what we do every day, for our students and employees and people. It is all about relationships. Anyone here from CWA for a report tonight? Okay, seeing none. Board Members, we have the consent agenda in front of us. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, with the exception, Superintendent, you were going to pull one of the items?
Yeah, I will be pulling item 14.3.
Okay. So, we will accept it as presented, with the exception of item number 14.3. Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll ask for your recommendation, please.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted, with the exception of item 14.3, which has been deleted.
Thank you. Board Members, we have the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
Any board member have a comment about any item presented, or any item they need pulled? Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Mr. and Superintendent, it's time for your report.
Thank you very much. We're in the middle of our fifth week of school, how time flies, and today is a very important day in the history of our country. This is the 17th anniversary of the 9/11 event in New York City, and in the Pentagon, and in Pennsylvania, and really affected our entire country. This morning, I was able to attend a meeting with the EDC, and Senator Bill Nelson was there, and before he addressed us, he talked about that, and where he was that day, and where he was in Washington at the Capitol Building, and, you know, we all remember where we were on that moment, those of us, the adults particularly. And so, I think it's an important day, and one that we never forget. We were fortunate enough, in some of our schools today, I know several schools had some programs, but Northport K-8 had officially named their media center the Northport K-8 School Children's Memorial Library, in honor and remembrance of the eight children who perished on United Flight 175 and American Flight 77 on September 11, 2001. Port St. Lucie also had a special presentation in their auditorium today with first responders and historic reflections. Fort Pierce Central did a 9/11 ceremony with their JROTC. And three of our safety officers were also 9/11 first responders, Frank Sisto, Ken Rodriguez, and Juan Moreno, so we want to thank them for their service as well. It was already mentioned about the day where folks, where parents can take their children over to get them monitored and have their hearts monitored, and I will send some information out, we'll do robocalls as well. And so, that's free service to folks, and a lot of times, they find things that is important to everyone, to everybody's well-being, and so, we really want to encourage parents to take advantage of that with their students. We also have some great news. We appealed two of our, well, we appealed four of our schools, but two of our schools were up, we won. Okamic K-8 is now an A-rated school. They had missed it by one, which gives us one additional point for the district, so if we were able to take our graduation rate from this past year and our acceleration points, we would have moved them forward. We would be an A-rated school district. But we'll wait till next year for that, but we want to congratulate them. And then, Performance Base Academy also got a rating of commendable, which is the highest rating that a non-graded school can get as well, and so, we want to commend that school for what they've done. The, just a couple of other things here. We've already talked about Dads' Take Your School, Take Your Child to School Week. We did the heart screenings, and with insurance, just wanted to announce that the CTA and the CU and the district were able to reach an agreement with our employees regarding insurance, and where the board will be able to contribute some dollars for that, so that approximately $300 for each employee, as insurance costs are going up, and I want to commend and thank the board for that. And we'll also be putting the $750 toward the Health Savings Account, again, trying to recognize the needs of our employees, and doing the best we can in a very, very tough, financially tough year that we have going in front of us. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have an attorney report?
Thank you.
Okay. Board Members, Mr. Ingersoll, do you have a report for us this evening?
Sorry.
Oh, I was...
Were you talking to me?
Yes. I was. It's time for your report, Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, ma'am, I'm on top of that. First off, I'd like to thank the community and thank the school district for another four years, and just so humbly and grateful for that opportunity. Also, just to let you guys know about VAB, we reappointed magistrates and hired some new ones, so VAB is our Value Board Adjustment. It consists of the county commissioners, an appointee from the school district, and also an appointee from the county commission, and it's going well, and the process is going off rather adequately. Second thing is, Bowl for Kids' Sake is coming up, September 22. If anyone's interested, please contact Big Brothers, Big Sisters. There's a great need out there, number one, for people to mentor, but also to have people to get involved and help donate funds. Funds are always a good thing. And second thing, or third thing, is I'd like to thank our school security. I've been to a lot of football games and after-school events, and this is also a note to the community, is that we're trying to get our students home as quickly as possible as soon as the games are over. And I think I went to a football game Friday night, and Mark Woods and his security crew were out there, and the students were gone within 20 minutes after the football game, which is great, because accidents don't, or incidences don't occur afterwards. So, parents, please help out the high schools and middle schools that when events are over, please pick your students up in a timely manner. That way, our administrators and our staff can get home at appropriate time, too, but again, accidents and incidences don't happen. Thank you so much, and that's it.
Ms. Henson?
Several things, of course.
First of all, I think that we should thank the State League of Women Voters for fighting some battles on the behalf of public education, traditional public schools. They did form an organization, a subcommittee of the State League of Women Voters, to fight Amendment Eight. It has been taken off. With Supreme Court, it is off. We're also, the League is also part of a different group that is looking at, showing support, is showing support for some of the other ballot amendments that they think are stacked inappropriately, and show support for that. Judge Gevers has temporarily removed some, they will go to the Supreme Court. But the League of Women Voters, over the last few years, have been willing to fight some very, very tough battles on behalf of voters' rights, and students' rights, and public education. So, I think we should be very, very glad of that, and let, maybe send them a thank you. Children's Services Council, we have our final budget hearing tomorrow night. The St. Lucie County Children's Services Council, as you probably are aware, has been leading the pack on many issues, and our executive director has been doing presentations around the state about the benefit of having an independent Children's Services Council in counties, and what that does for prevention intervention, and actually student achievement and success. Early Learning Coalition, we are still looking for a permanent home, so we will be going through that, due diligence, working with the state to make sure that there is some opportunity for, I guess you'd say, quality analysis. We volunteered our Early Learning Coalition to be a pilot, if they would so see fit to do that. New Horizons, our CEO is leaving in December. He thinks that 30 years in that career of mental health, I guess, is enough. So, we have been doing interviews, and several of the people we interviewed were very well aware of the partnership with the public schools and the mental health community in St. Lucie County, and I found that to be a very positive thing, that people from the outside, including the head of mental health in the state of Illinois, knew some of the partnerships that existed. So, there's a lot of positive things going on in St. Lucie County. We should be very, very pleased that not only that, but we still have a team together, and several of the school districts in the state do not have that, but we do, and we will continue to go forward.
Ms. Henson?
I just want to congratulate Debbie Holly, Troy Ingersoll. Dr. Mills couldn't be with us this evening. It's very encouraging to me personally to have board members intact, people that I know their personality, and I know their passion for education. And as a team, I've always felt like that we've learned how to put our party aside in our sometimes personal opinions, and do what's best for the children of St. Lucie County, and the families of St. Lucie County, and sometimes that's not easy, but I'm very encouraged to have these people that I know personally will fight for every child in this community, and for the best for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Just a couple remarks. We, the District Advisory Council began their meetings again last night, and we were, Superintendent Gent was very gracious, and came and spoke to the group, talking about the highlights from last year, as well as the goals and aspirations for this coming year. So, we look forward to an exciting year from the District Advisory Council as well. And just for your awareness, I will leave tomorrow to travel to Live Oak, Florida, where they have a Board of Directors training for Florida School Board Association. I am the director for District 19, so I'll be gathering with other cohorts from across the state, where we learn more training. A lot of focus this year is going to be on safety and social and emotional learning, so I'm looking very forward to that. And then, we'll have our Board of Director meeting on Friday, and a lot of that conversation will begin to revolve around legislative issues for this year. Seems like we just were saying that the year had finished, and here we are, time to begin planning that again. And then, next week, there will be a legislative platform through the Florida School Board Association, and Ms. Hensley will be out of town, but I will represent us there as well as we begin to put the legislative platform for the entire state together, so. And I do want to add my thanks to each of you and everyone listening. It is a humbling experience to run for office, but to be returned to a seat that is so important to me, and that I have so much passion for, and working with this team, and what we're able to accomplish as a team, is just a very, very high honor. There's nothing in the world I enjoy more than representing this school district, and I thank you profusely for returning me to the seat for another four years. At this time, we will...
I left one thing off.
Oh, sorry.
We have, was voted in tonight Valerie Foreman, who is the new AP at Rivers Edge. She's sitting on the back row. If she would please stand and be recognized, and congratulations to Valerie. And I also want to offer my congratulations to the three of you, two of you are here tonight, for winning that election, and it was a great day for our school district.
We have no other unscheduled speakers before us, and I hear no other business to come before us, so we are adjourned.